2020, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coolman?
Here.
Ms. Matroni?
Here.
Mr. Matusak?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Here.
Please join and stand if you're able and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one liberty, and the Constitution of the United States of America. Okay, let's hopefully this goes smoothly today. The minutes of council meeting for November 3rd.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I do have the meeting minutes for the council meeting of November 3rd. I believe they have it distributed amongst the rest of council. If there is no objection or any concerns within those meeting minutes, I am going to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the November 3rd council meeting and dispense as written and to dispense with the reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Abstained.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no special reports, letters, communications, citizen concerns. Hearing none, we will move on to administrative reports. First, I just want to take this opportunity to hope everybody has a very happy holiday of Thanksgiving. It's going to be a different Thanksgiving than normal, but I think it is a good time to be thankful for all the family and friends that we have in our lives and make sure that we do reach out to everybody, especially because we probably won't be able to be as in-person as normal this year. So, happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the community. Second, obviously, the COVID continues to be an issue, so we ask everyone to have courtesy towards others and be consistent with the governor's orders regarding wearing masks in public and doing your best to comply with physical distancing requirements. I have one action, but before I do that, I do want to encourage everyone in this time where before the next council meeting, we have Small Business Saturday coming up. Local businesses are the heart of this community, and we need to make sure that we take opportunity to not just thank them, but to patronize them and to support them during this difficult time. So, we encourage people to support local businesses owned by their neighbors and friends. Having said that, I will now recommend to council the appointment of Randy Feringer to the Citizens Parks and Recreation Committee, and that ends my report.
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to wait?
We can do it now.
Okay. With that being said, the Appointment Review Committee did meet here five minutes before the meeting, and they did recommend 3-0, the approval, and I know in the recreation report, Ms. Born is going to also make note that there was 3-0 recommendation from the Recreation Committee as well. So, at this point, I would like to make the motion to appoint Randy Feringer to the Citizens Park and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Thank you. Administrative report?
Oh, pardon.
Sorry, I jumped around there.
That's okay, just trying to get some information together for Councilman Matusak. I just wanted to let council know that we continue both the Law Director, Human Resources Manager, and we stop to monitor the pandemic situation as well as the best practices from CDC, Wood County Health, and the state of Ohio, and we are constantly amending protocols and procedures to make sure we are in as possible a safe situation.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's a little feedback there. I think someone might be in the wrong. So, having some technical difficulties.
While we work on that, Dave, does the Finance Director have a report? Thank you. Director of Law has no report. President of Council?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution, and this is one thing that unfortunately it wasn't printed off, and I know Ms. Cabot is going to go ahead and get that printed off and added to this as well. This resolution is in support of Small Business Saturday. I will read this off. I'm hoping that council would be in support of passing this, and this actually came from one couple of the Chamber of Commerce as a request. So, what we would like to do is recognize November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday and supporting awareness of the value of our small businesses, whereas we join the Toledo Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Perrysburg Area Chamber of Commerce in celebrating our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our community, and whereas in our region, there are about 50,000 businesses with fewer than 100 employees, according to most recent data from the U.S. Census Bureau, and whereas nationally, there are 31.7 million small businesses which employ 47.1% of America's private workforce, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, and whereas small businesses throughout our nation and region have been particularly challenged due to the COVID-19 pandemic and should be recognized for their efforts, and whereas small businesses often offer many unique products and services as well as local crafts and specialties, and whereas small businesses contribute to our communities by providing goods, creating jobs, and supporting the overall health of our economy, and whereas businesses, public entities, and other organizations across the nation have established a Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we do hereby recognize November 20th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and it's a residence of our communities to support small businesses on Small Business Saturday as well as throughout the year, especially during this pandemic. So, I would like to make a motion in support of that resolution.
I'd like the second.
Discussion.
I would like to say I think it's terrific, and all this week's, November 16th through, I believe it's the 22nd, is Downtown House Week, so we could support that as well.
Roll call.
All right, Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. I do have one quick follow-up question with the order that I think we have from our governor's line regarding, I think, a curfew. I'm not sure how the enforcement is going to go on that or what the administration has seen on that, but I, for one, am a little concerned on a curfew and how that would even be enforced.
The administration found out the same time you did today. We have not had a chance to talk to anyone regarding enforcement or the police. We do know it's important that everybody do their part regarding the COVID virus, but yes, there are numbers issues there, and I'll let Bridget take it over, but I think what we plan to do is kind of figure out what to do and then get back to you, everyone, and kind of update.
Shoot first, ask questions last.
That's right, that's right.
I can tell council and the mayor that this afternoon, after the governor's press conference, there was a separate conference call with chiefs of police across the state of Ohio, and I've yet to speak to Chief Jones on what information he received during that meeting or guidance, but we do have a meeting tomorrow morning to find out what that is. So, we can certainly let all of council know what that procedure is going to look like.
And we have a plan.
If we know what that procedure is like.
Okay. Finance Committee, and before we do that, we want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Matusak on his election win last Tuesday, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate your vote. She called him off.
We've got to figure out how to mute the lines.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Press one to disconnect.
Sorry, I think this meeting just got lost real quick.
Thank you, Tom.
The conference is now finished. You will now be disconnected.
Okay. I do have a report tonight. The Finance and Economic Development Committee did meet a week ago tonight, last Tuesday, November 10th. All the members were present, including from the administration, Kate, our Law Director, Dave, our Finance Director, Amber, our Deputy Finance Director, and Steve Bronder, our Income Tax Commissioner. The first item on the agenda was authorization that was being requested to purchase a new air handler. I'm not going to read this to you, but in a nutshell, the unit that heats the Police Division is getting pretty old, and they want to replace that. Next up was Economic Development. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion, but Ms. Born had a question about what maybe the city has been doing to promote economic development, and there was a brief discussion about that. It's in my report, the Finance Director's report. We went over our usual things that we do each time. The only thing that I want to note out loud for the record is that the Health and Welfare Fund is down to about $55,000 at the end of October, with two months left in the year, and Mr. Krebs did say we're at about 123% of the aggregate staff loss, which means we'll probably be getting a reimbursement at some point. We will at some point, we just don't know when and how much it's going to be, but in the meantime, to the extent we need to, Mr. Krebs will be transferring funds from the General Fund to cover claims that go through the Welfare Fund. The Tax Commissioner's report, Mr. Bronder reported that the collections for October were about $1,003,000, which is down again from the same period a year ago, for the same reasons it's been down in prior months since the pandemic hit. What else did we talk about here? Probably do this quickly for you guys. Oh, and interestingly, Mr. Bronder provided us with an update. The Ohio Supreme Court did rule on whether or not the central collection of municipal net profits taxes by the Ohio Department of Taxation is constitutional, and it did hold that it is constitutional, but interestingly enough, it also held that the related 0.5% administrative fee that the state had been charging the municipalities, including Perrysburg, was unconstitutional. So, I raised the obvious question, well, how much have we paid in those fees so far, and when can we expect to get it back? And Mr. Bronder is going to be monitoring that, so I think we're in good hands there. And then, on the topic of the 2021 budget, the Finance Committee reviewed the budgets of those departments that don't come directly under the purview of any of the other committees, which included the Administrator's Budget, the Mayor's Budget, the Law Director's Budget, the Prosecutor's Budget, and then the Finance Department's Budget, and my report includes some of the discussion that was there. The meeting adjourned at 6:27, and I did put a note in my committee report, which I think might not be a bad idea if we make that a practice, but I put a note down there at the bottom that this report is just a summary of what took place at that meeting, and that audio and video recordings are available if anyone's interested in more details, and they can get that from the administration. And our next meeting, if nothing changes, is currently scheduled for Tuesday, December 8th at 5:30. Okay. As the agenda shows, I have two pieces of legislation. The first one is going to be a second reading of our legislation dealing with the administration's proposed budget. So, I would like to introduce again Ordinance 22, 2020, and move that the rolls be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second. Discussion or roll call?
Okay, roll call. Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 22, 2020, making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Perrysburg, Wood County, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I'm not going to move for passage tonight, but if there's any discussion that anybody would like to engage in, I think now is the time for that. If not, I'll move on to the next piece of legislation. Okay. That's a good sign for everybody. My next piece of legislation I addressed in my report that I just went over a few minutes ago, and the one, the copy that you got in your packet has been revised somewhat, so I've got a new copy of that for everybody. Really, the only thing that changed is I changed it to just kind of incorporate some of the comments that were made in the legislative history, legislative summary, and some of the stuff that came out of the committee. So, that's really the only change is I just baked that into the legislation so that it's in there. Nothing else really changed. Nothing of any real substance. So, I would like to introduce Resolution 58, 2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and a dispense with the second and third readings. Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Resolution Number 58, 2020, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Dunbar Mechanical Incorporated not to exceed $34,325 to the replacement of a Skulz four-ton air handler and condensing unit and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 58, 2020, be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Matusak?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that is all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Service Committee?
We have not met. We're tentatively supposed to meet Wednesday, the 25th. I'm not sure if we're going to.
So, if I may interject, I know Ms. Cabot came up, and since we have two meetings on the 23rd of November, and it would also be on the 23rd of November, being the Public Utilities and Service, and being that those are a day before Thanksgiving, and are, I think that I got the date right, but the day before Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas Eve, one of the suggestions, and I've talked with Ms. Cabot, is possibly combining the November-December meeting, do you say around December 9th, and having those meetings both before the last council meeting for anything that needs to be passed before the end of the year. So, that way, we're basically reducing them, but still able to have the conversation that needs to be had, and apparently, I don't think there's anything that is going to be too pressing that wouldn't be able to move that meeting up. So, I wanted to see if anybody on those committees would be okay with potentially moving those up to the, say, December 9th.
I can make that work on service. Yeah, that would work.
Mr. Van Hoozen for Public Utilities?
On December the 9th, I believe that's Planning and Zoning.
Oh, is that Planning and Zoning Day?
So, whether we have that, I don't know.
We could potentially maybe... In rec. What about the 10th? Is there anything on the 10th?
Plan Commission at 7:00.
I could do 10 before that.
So, we could do maybe 5 and 6 on the 10th?
I'm fine with 5 or 6.
So, 5 for the service and then 6 p.m. for Public Utilities?
That'd be fine.
The 10th?
Yes.
12:10, all right.
All right.
Other than thanking Finance Committee for helping me out with my police issue, that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report. If we have scheduled on November 24th at 6 p.m., if that is deemed necessary by all those involved, at 6 p.m. That's it.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a report. I'll try to be brief when I read it. Report from regular meeting of November 10th, 2020. Present were myself, Deborah Born, Chairwoman Deborah Born, Councillors Jonathan Smith and Jan Matroni, Law Director Kate Sandretto. Chairwoman Deborah Born opened the meeting at 6:35 p.m. in council chambers. After the Pledge of Allegiance, citizen concerns were requested and none presented. Old business, there was no discussion of the inclusive playground, splash pad, multipurpose wall, or the West Side handball court. Chairwoman Born reported that there is a 501(c)(3) account in process of being created so that the donors to the Riverside Park Canons stands can claim their contributions as deductions. Mr. Smith asked if the administration has been informed of this. Chairwoman Born responded that they have, and she will continue to provide updates as they occur. Under new business, Chairwoman Born asked Randy Feringer, who is here tonight, who is being nominated by the mayor for a position on Cities Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee PrAC, to come forward and discuss the reasons for wanting the position. Mr. Feringer stated that his residence is 250 Birchdale Road and that he has lived in the city for about 20 years. Mr. Feringer and his girlfriend enjoy walking in all of the city parks, and he feels that service on PrAC is an opportunity to give back to the community. He also stated that serving on PrAC will give him an opportunity to report back to the committee any park-related issues he finds during his walks. Mr. Smith and Ms. Matroni both stated they already know Mr. Feringer and feel that he will make an excellent member of PrAC. The committee then voted unanimously to recommend his appointment. Chairwoman Born also announced that the mayor intends to reappoint Chris Patrick, who I believe is out here tonight, and Jessica Kemp, who are current members of PrAC to a second term. Chairwoman Born then asked the committee for comments about the position of the 2021 budget, which deals with recreation. She herself stated that she had only received the document at 3 p.m. that day. Mr. Smith commented there is no allocation of money for additional parkland on the West Side in the budget, but the city administration needs to keep its eyes peeled for possible land acquisitions for new parks in underserved areas. Chairwoman Born commented that she thought $6,450 seemed to be high for Three Meadows Pond. She and Mr. Smith both asked Ms. Sandretto to provide further information on this. Ms. Matroni asked why the cost of the summer theater program was more than double last year's cost. Ms. Born asked Ms. Sandretto to ask the city administrator about it. Ms. Matroni then asked why there was no money for Safety Town in the recreation budget. Ms. Sandretto said that Safety Town money comes from a different budget. Chairwoman Born asked if it comes from the police budget. Mr. Smith stated that he would like to know what plans the administration has for repairing broken playground equipment in the parks. Mr. Smith also stated that after hearing Chairwoman Born's question, he had checked the police budget and found Safety Town money in it. Ms. Matroni asked if the portageons are going to remain in the parks and why the park restrooms continue to be closed. Ms. Sandretto said not in all parks have restrooms, and the restrooms in the parks, which do have them, remain closed because of COVID. Ms. Matroni asked why hours are closed when the ones in the metro parks are open. Ms. Sandretto replied the portageons are considered to be less likely to spread the virus because less touching is required. Chairwoman Born said that the Second Street bathrooms are also closed. Mr. Smith stated that now we have the equipment to clean the facilities properly. The administration needs to clean and reopen them now. Chairwoman Born stated to Mr. Smith that she appreciated the pavilion with bathrooms that the Rotary Club is building in Rotary Park, which is much nicer than the porta-potties. Chairwoman Born then asked if there was any item in the recreation budget that either councillor would like removed. Mr. Smith responded that he would like the Director of Public Service, Rob Ross, to furnish a list of any items Mr. Ross had requested that were removed. Chairwoman Born reported that as a council representative, she had attended the November PrAC meeting, at which PrAC had suggested construction of a crosswalk between Rotary and Rivercrest Park. Mr. Smith stated that this would be a good subject for the Safety Committee. Ms. Born responded that she had already informed the Safety Committee, but she also wanted to inform the Recreation Committee because the request came from PrAC. Mr. Smith said that he would like to see a crosswalk there. The meeting adjourned at 7:03 p.m. Next regular meeting is scheduled for December 8th, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. The report was prepared by Deborah Elborn, that's me, Chairwoman, November 14th, 2020. I would also like to make mention that Connor Patrick is here tonight, and I had informed council and the Recreation Committee several times that this year that we were going to have a presentation of a plaque for Connor Patrick. He is here if he would like to please come up, but before he does, can I give a brief view about what you've done when you were on PrAC, a little bit about you? And I need to say that the plaque has been presented by Kuzno Restoration, and that's Michael Kuzno, who is the president slash owner, and he could not be here tonight because of all things COVID, because his company is also involved with the hospitals. They have a medical division, so he could not be here, but he does appreciate getting the plaque, and the plaque is a great idea for encouraging younger people who are high school students to be involved with government and/or civics. So, if I could say a little bit about him first, if you don't mind. Connor Patrick served from 2018 and 2019. He has a 4.0 GPA. He is a captain of the Perrysburg High School Varsity and Dive Team, where he's a multi-year district's qualifier in diving. He plays guitar for the Ignite Band at Grace United Methodist Church, and his goal for the future is to become a materials scientist focusing on polymers innovations. So, Connor, if you and Chris, I believe Chris is here, and is this Mrs. Patrick? You could all come up, and I'll give that to you.
Connor, it's your big chance, you want to say something? Do you want to say something?
Give him the mic, he's calling your book.
I would just like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee. It's definitely been a good opportunity for me to get involved with the community and make a change that I feel was very impactful, and yeah, I'm just proud of the changes that happened to Rotary Park under my watch, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, I appreciate it.
End of my reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning?
Thank you, Your Honor. We met on November 12th at 5:34 p.m. Myself was present, as well as committee members, Coolman and Van Hoozen, our Law Director, Planning and Zoning Administrator, and Deputy Planning and Zoning Administrator, were all present as well. In the area of citizens' concerns, we've had two couples, I can kind of summarize this a bit, who have ended up building pools that are closer than the required 15-foot setback. In one case, they hired a contractor who's been a bit of a problem for the city, who pulled a permit that had the pool 17 feet off the property line. However, when the final inspection was done, it was 11... the pool themselves 12 foot, 12 feet from the property line, dealing with trying to deal with various easement issues. We talked at length about how to achieve a possible resolution. I think the committee was of the mind that they wanted to find a way to help the residents without making them move the pools that had already been installed. Greg Beatty, a member of our planning commission, happened to be at the meeting that night, and he cautioned the committee about creating an after-the-fact variance for this issue because he said it would open up a Pandora's box. One possible resolution we discussed was to change the minimum setback for pools to 10 feet instead of 15 feet. Mr. Hall had done some research and shared it with us, and it appears the 10-foot setback is the setback required in several neighboring jurisdictions, so we'll take a look at that. Committee member Van Hoozen was, made a good point that he was maybe suggesting we go in a different direction perhaps on this issue because, as he pointed out, it's human nature to put the envelope, and so if we lower it to 10 feet, then we'll have people pushing it to 9 feet, and we'll be right back where we are now. He wanted us to think more about keeping the setback at 15 feet and then allowing for variances in very specifically defined circumstances. Some other options were to require an inspection instead of doing it after the pool's built to do that when the pool is state. We also talked about bonding of contractors. In the event they violate the setback requirements, that we have a mechanism to correct the situation. And we voted 3L to recommend this issue to the planning commission for their recommendation. We did talk on a limited basis, and I, it wasn't enough to be really official, but we did also talk about maybe a way, I'll mention it, well, yeah, Bridget, you were a town at the time. We talked a little bit about listing, in some fashion, these problem contractors, or if you can just give that some thought, we'll take it up at our next meeting, but this particular contractor, I don't even know his name, and I wouldn't say it, but he's been a repeat offender. And maybe we can have an information resource for folks who are building a pool, they can go to the city website or whatever and find out, has this guy, or has this contractor been a problem for the city, or has he been, has he had several successful projects? So we will take that up as we consider, to continue to consider this issue. Mr. Coolman moved to approve the minutes of the October 12 meeting as written, that passed unanimously. City Law Director Sandretto was there to review the changes she made to the proposed legislation that would allow the raising of hens in the city. It has been added as a permitted use in the R. Forzene zoning district, added a minimum lot size of just shy of 11,000 square feet, and coops and runs must be at least 20 feet from the property line. Committee member Coolman asked if the minimum coop size is warranted. Mark Weber, who was present that night and is present tonight, said that people who want to make the investment of time and resources to raise hens will take good care of them, and he didn't believe that a minimum was needed. We did agree 3O to recommend adoption of legislation to city council, which will come to you later as ordinances 23 and 24. My intention was just to do a first reading tonight so that maybe there's an opportunity for this idea to percolate around the city, if there is. I mean, we have had, I know we had one gentleman who appeared in opposition to this when we had our public hearing, but I want to make sure all voices are heard before we do anything final. I might as well go ahead and do those now. With that having been said, I'd like to introduce ordinances 23 and 24, 2020, and move the rules be allowed for their reading by number and title only. Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
And Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Matuzak.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 23, 2020, amending codified zoning ordinance section 1215.02, number 180, of the City of Perrysburg's zoning code to allow for the keeping of hens within the City of Perrysburg. Ordinance number 24, 2020, amending the codified ordinance, codified zoning ordinance section 1225.08 of the City of Perrysburg's zoning code to allow for the keeping of hens within the City of Perrysburg.
All right, I will continue then. Our next item was to receive a report from Planning and Zoning Administrator Brody Walters that at the October 29 Planning Commission meeting, they voted or recommended not to change the code requirements that limit the height of our providing and other natural planning borders, if you will. We asked if there's any discussion regarding the existing violations, because we all know as we drive around town, there's plenty of them out there. And he said that they were acknowledged, they did acknowledge that there are instances of noncompliance, but it was that they felt that it had been added to the code because screenings were being used as a workaround to avoid the fence restrictions, and so it should be tried to be contained moving forward. I think we figured out that this restriction went into the code in 2008. We'll, at the committee level, give it some thought and see if we want to proceed further with any potential changes. We reviewed the budget worksheet for the Planning and Zoning Department. It all appeared to be in order, and we had no questions with that. Per request of John, Jonathan Smith, the administration had received a question about whether we should enforce the city's code parking lot requirements on small business parking lots. Brody and Kate both kind of spoke to this issue, and they said that they did not feel the requirements are a hindrance to small business. They've not heard any complaints or issues along those lines. The city law director pointed out, when you hit eight parking spaces, you have to have a shade tree in. When you hit 11, you have to have a landscape island. And when you're getting to that sort of size, we do have to take into account the consideration of our overall goal to enhance the appearance of parking lots. Brody added that the downtown small businesses aren't required to have parking, and so small businesses in River Place and places like that are not responsible for the parking lot. And Barry Van Hoozen stated that he agrees we need to have standards, but many, for many of the, in many of these situations, it's simply an economic decision. So if, the way we left it is if there are specific issues, we'd like to get those on the table with Brody so that he can talk with anybody who does have a problem. In the area of other business, Brody had pointed out to us that they had a rather poor turnout for the land use plan meeting. It was supposed to be a public meeting that was held the previous evening. The administration had already discussed that, and they are scheduling and probably have by now scheduled a rerun, if you will, of that meeting. Finally, we, Jonathan Smith had asked us to talk again about the cemetery fence issue and whether the committee could consider some variance in institutionally zoned areas that would be, allow structures to be replaced with like kind, to in effect just take that current fence and just rebuild it. Brody Walters reminded us that the cemetery is located in the city's corridor overlay, and then we had discussion about, we at the committee, and as I said, planning commission member Beatty happened to be there as well, really are not seeing why that fence is needed. Brody Walters offered that if the concern is a car accident, a Ballard's or columns of some sort could be installed that are more in keeping with the corridor overlay and are more aesthetically pleasing since this area is a gateway to the city. The committee asked if Mr. Walters could produce a rendering to help envision what it would look like. Mark Weber had showed us and recommended something like the Spofford House has, which are columns with a natural hedge line between them. And so Jonathan will pass that information along to the cemetery board, I guess, in the morning. We adjourned at 7:30, 8:00 PM, and we meet again on Wednesday, December 9 at 5:30.
If I can just follow up real quick on the small business parking lot discussion. I know it's a really small section for probably what was the discussion, and I just wanted some clarification. Is the conversation going to continue happening in the planning and zoning, or is, at this point, is it just stopped as looked at as we're not sure what to do at this point?
We're really not sure what to do with it. And I suggested that night that maybe sometimes people don't necessarily come to the city, but they may come to elected officials and say, "This, this is a problem for us." And I think the thought we had that night was that maybe if some of us are hearing from small businesses, that this really is a headache for them or a problem, that they wouldn't mind coming forward so we can talk about it.
I'll definitely relay that back to a couple. One of the things I just feel, and this may be a misquote on here, and I just wanted to get clarification, is I know they said that they do not feel that the requirements are a hindrance to small business. I would disagree, especially with the later comment about the economic decisions that can come to that, that when you're having to increase a, and I don't know the exact numbers, and I would be curious to see, I'm sure that some of these parking lots that have been brought to the city to be repaired or replaced had initial cost to it, and when they've come back with some of these requirements, I'd be curious to see what that additional cost is to these businesses as well. And I know that it was mentioned that, say, River Place, those businesses there don't, aren't responsible for it, but they do pay for the additional cost associated in their rent. And it's one thing that, it may not necessarily be a hindrance to the aesthetics, because it will make it look better, but there's definitely a cost hindrance that has me concerned on requiring an ordinance or ordinance of law change to the parking lot to come in to do the repairs or replace. And we all agree, we'd rather see a better parking lot repaved and look nicer, and it would be great to have some of the trees shaded. I just, I'm concerned, if we add too much requirements, what that additional cost is going to be, and if that's going to hinder these businesses from doing the complete repair, or if they do it in section, it looks, in my opinion, not as aesthetically pleasing for a four or five-year period as they're doing it in the sections as what the code would allow.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's always the tension between, does enforcement of your requirements then, in effect, serve as a deterrent from people improving their parking lot? And, you know, and the other thing I think we were starting with that night is, I don't know what the definition of a small parking lot is that you'd exempt.
Yeah, and I think that's.
Because I don't know that there, I couldn't think of many.
Maybe it's more of a, a poor, I'm trying to think of the term off the top, but a poor description of what I'm looking for is, is there something that we can look at in some of these smaller business parking lots? And I know that we have definitely larger businesses that might have the same situation, but I think it's something that we should be looking at. Even for a large business, that could be a, you know, a six-figure increase for them that just might make it not doable.
I think we've all seen the Costco parking lot and the Walmart parking lot, and I'm going to throw a number out there, I could be wrong, but 60% of the parking lot never, ever, ever gets used because it's just too much parking lot. It's those outline areas, you know, by the outlaths, they just never get used, but they got these beautiful shade trees and everything, and it was just, it was an unnecessary cost. And it's kind of interesting that at the beginning of the meeting, we passed a resolution acknowledging the importance of small businesses, and yet we placed what has also been acknowledged as an economic decision on them that's not a hindrance when it in fact is. That's why we're trying to get people to go and shop at the small businesses. So we've got, we're kind of taking two different positions on somewhat related issues here the same night as they relate to small businesses. It's important that we.
That's going in a slightly different direction. Are we requiring too many parking spaces? And I don't think anyone's going to argue that Costco or Walmart or something is a small business. I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm thinking, are we talking about like the parking lots for banks, or the Auto Place on South Boundary, or, I mean, is that, or are some just suggesting we ought to reconsider entirely our landscaping requirements for parking lots?
What I'm, I would say that it's something that we should be looking at, especially when it comes to the repair of some of these properties that were at one time in the township when they were initially built, or let's say was early on before the code was changed. If we're going to require them to come up to code after the fact, there needs to be at least some sort of give and take in that portion, instead of having these requirements to where, again, you know, I don't know what the cost would be. It would be nice to know exactly what, what those cost changes are. And I know I've heard some numbers from, from some people, but it would be nice to know for certain if we have something like that in the city files to get an idea, but to go from, let's say, $50,000 or $100,000 more for these requirements for some of these businesses makes it, is attractive to add those in there. Not to mention the landscaping costs and so forth, for something that they purchased it, they were unaware of this ordinance change.
Yeah, I know.
More like a grandfathering in or to something to where this is going, as long as you're maintaining the same footprint, keep it as is until, you know, it has to, you're adding additional spaces or looking to make some changes.
Well, you'll remember, Jonathan, we were on Planning and Zoning together when I, I can't remember, it's Craig MacKitt's business, but I can't remember the business name, but that's exactly the case you said. He had a property that was initially zoned in the township, has now been annexed into the city. And I think Brody worked pretty hard with him to come up with a schedule, as, if I'm remembering correctly, it was like over 10 years. He could undertake the improvements to his property that he wanted piecemeal, but I mean, not piecemeal in the sense even that you can only do 10% of your parking lot. It was like, do your parking lot and do the landscaping in year two, and that, you know. We tried those, but it's, it's a continuing dilemma. I'm not going to say it isn't, and we're struggling, obviously, because we've annexed and now we're taking properties that don't comply with city code. And you have property owners then who may want to make some improvements, but they can't afford to bring it all up to code immediately.
And from my understanding is, is everything is, from my being on the planning and zoning in the past, a lot of it is, this is what the code says, we have to do it this way. And I'm looking for some ways of allowing some flexibility for those who, when they had the property or they purchased the property, that it was something that wasn't necessarily part of the code at the time, or maybe this is some changes that occurred later to force them after the fact, if they already purchased it, why, why make them, it's like purchasing your house, and say they require it has sprinkler systems in your home, are we going to go and force everyone to have sprinklers? I'm making something a little outlandish here for Ohio, but, you know, that's something that happens in more of the fire-prone areas.
Yeah, I agree. I'd love to have a solution. I see Bridget standing at the podium, so she has it, and she's going to offer it right now.
I do not have the answer, but I do recall the conversation that you mentioned, Councilman McCarthy. Brody Walters had worked with that particular business owner who was looking to expand their footprint, and that triggered those sections of the code that required them to come up to compliance. And he did several permutations of, say, like a sliding scale, that over a 10-year period of time, you would have to meet certain milestones along the way. And my recollection is every iteration of that was wholeheartedly turned down by that particular business owner. And I know it was brought to the Planning and Zoning Committee at the time. I think Mr. King was here at the time as a planning and zoning administrator, perhaps even. So it has been a while ago, about seven years ago or so. But after that, I think we kind of threw up our hands and said, "Well, we've come up with five or six different ideas or ways, and none of them were appealing to that property owner." And so at that point, I believe he decided not to move forward with expanding that particular facility.
And that can be concerning too, if we want to have businesses growing in the city.
Yeah, and I mean, we did talk once, that this may have been while you were on the committee, Jonathan, or before. I remember consideration of one point, doing like an overlay out there in the Echo Road area where you have all those properties that were initially zoned in the city and initially built in the, or in the township, I mean, and initially built in the township, and is there a way we could, you know, work with them or make some allowances for them that they wouldn't be discouraged from investing in their businesses because they couldn't afford to do the whole project?
We've actually done that in the last year or two. The lumber company is out on that corridor there, and they, they had, they came to planning commission.
afford to do the whole project?
We've actually done that, uh, in the last year or two, the lumber company is out on that corridor there, and they, they had, uh, they came to plan commission, I believe the council came to council as well, but the, the administration worked with them to make sure they made improvements, particularly to the front of the property and to the parking lot in the front, had certain requirements, but they have a lot of pavement and storage and, and it went to the back, so there were a number of accommodations made by everyone involved. They wanted to, they wanted to expand and increase their business and, and we wanted to facilitate that growth, so there, there was a case-by-case basis certainly, but that was, be a good example of, uh, very relatively comfortable that, you know, they did not have to, they need to have some fencing, we didn't make them tear down the entire fencing, made them, make some improvements. You drive out there now, you see that they've put in some mounding and some arborvitae, coincidentally.
Six feet?
Better not be too tall.
No, I think they're just pine trees, but yeah. But yeah, we've got some things there, so they make some improvements, and that, but because the property was so large, went to the back, there were some, the administration and made recommendations, I think the plan commission also approved, and council, I think, did ultimately approve those improvements that were a balance between making the appearance, nice and presentable for the, consistent with what our code desires for as far as , uh, businesses and while being, uh, cost-effective for the business. So I think that's kind of how we're approaching it now, and that's something where, you know, if somebody has a concern, we, they, we need to bring it forward and, or bring it, and we'll try and work through any business that we can.
I, I would be interested in seeing how comparable cities handle this with the issues, but also, um, we all have to agree that you can have two businesses with same amount of employees and same size, and they're not going to generate the same amount of traffic. Uh, like, um, there's one, is it Finley, that little insurance bond place or whatever, Finley? That, if that was a coffee shop, we all would agree that parking lot's not going to be big enough, but for them, it is. So, again, it goes back to you, what you say, what is a small business? There's different types, do they all need the same type of zoning for the parking lots and that type of thing?
And part of the discussion, uh, with Brody there, because I, I mentioned specific parking lots, that like Fifth Street Pub would be one example of if they're required to update that, are we going to lose parking? Uh, because obviously there, they're overflowing already. Uh, is, is that going to be a safety concern? Um, and what Brody basically said is that, uh, when they come before, uh, planning and zoning, for that permit, they try to come up with alternative solutions, uh, like landscaping on the outskirts or planting extra trees on the outskirts or perimeters to help accommodate those types of situations. But I, I, I got the general sense of the night being that if it's a small business with 10 or less parking spots, it's really not going to affect them, which, uh, I, I believe is pretty inclusive of, of what you're worried about, John.
Well, there is, um, some businesses, they say that 10 or, or less, and if it works great, if it doesn't follow the cut, they have to abide by the requirements, but if you have one that says 15 or 20, uh, I'm curious to see what the additional cost is, I mean.
And it's, it, it seemed for me, and maybe I have a, a misperception of the conversation, is that they try to work with those individuals to come up with solutions that aren't going to necessarily be cost prohibitive, as far as like extra islands or, or things that they can do that are in the spirit of our zoning code, but not necessarily in compliance, if that makes sense?
Well, if they're not, from my experience of the planning zoning, everything has to be in compliance and that's.
Whatever it's like, that seems to be.
And so it, I'm not, if it's, uh, not in compliance, from what I've always been told in the past, is you have to have, uh, uh, strict, um, issuance of the code, I mean, look at the, the pools, I mean.
No, and, and I understand that, but that, that was what I pulled from that conversation, I don't know if you agree with that or not, Mary.
That, that was my takeaway as well, and I, I'm pleased to hear.
If I can clarify that, please, what I believe Mr. Walters was indicating is that administration will work with that property owner prior to them taking to their site plan to plan commission and making a recommendation at that level. That is where that, that activity happens. So we can make a recommendation to the plan commission on the site plan for approval with, um, modifications or variances, it's up to the plan commission whether they accept it or not. That is what he was referring to.
And some of our conversation that's, that night also, is, is the minutes reflected was, businesses are going to make a decision based on whether they can afford to do it or not. I don't think any of them are opposed to looking good, looking, you know, like this community wants them to. So when they choose not to spend that money, then potentially they will become a nuisance. And we haven't had any businesses in that role, but if that becomes the case, then, you know, as we've talked about variances for other things, there may be a hardship case, or there may be variances allowed for that. And I, and Corey, I think your example of the tow path is a good example, because that's, I'm guessing 25 cars, so it would be probably three islands, so, so they have chosen not to do anything in that parking lot even though they've redone the complex, and we don't know why. So, I think, you know, our actions reflect what we can afford to do typically, and, and that's what we'll end up seeing, I guess, over time.
There's also some liability upon the property owners for not doing certain maintenance too, so.
Which is that nuisance piece and, right. So that was part of the conversation as well.
Yeah, we're definitely not just pushing it to the side, I, I think it is in, in a concert or, uh, it goes along with the spirit of the resolution we passed tonight, I guess, to go to Jim's point, that we are trying to be as supportive as possible, even in that committee, even though, you know, sometimes it looks like we're requiring extra things of these small businesses, we are at the committee level asking those questions, um, and trying to work on those solutions, so, want to make that very clear.
All right.
You are?
I guess we've got a lot of work to do.
Happy to work with you. Ed, your report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, Personnel Committee?
No report, next meeting, November 24th.
Public Utilities?
Uh, no report, your honor, and our next meeting is going to be on December 10th at 6:00 PM.
All right, any other business come before council?
I, I just want to mention that, uh, the third and final reading of the budget will be next council meeting, and that if anyone has anything that they, uh, have in the way of questions or concerns for the administration, they get them to the administration before the next meeting.
That'd be very helpful, yes.
So, so those questions can be resolved going into the meeting, and then if anyone's got anything that they think is worthy of discussion during the budget, they want to get that to the, the council president, so he knows what's going to happen before it happens, um, so that meeting can be as productive as possible.
Mr. Matusak, would you like us also to direct anything to you?
You can, but I would probably eventually send it off to, uh, President Smith, since he's the president of council.
I was just asking, since you're the, my, my chair.
It's not necessary. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
No vote?
Aye.
No objection, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.